Well, then we will call the May meeting of the North Liberty Community Library Board of Trustees to order. Yay! Alright, anyone have additions or changes to the agenda?
No?
No? Okay, and next up is April Minutes. Did everyone get a chance to look those over? Questions, comments, or concerns?
Um, just a comment. Scott does such a great job with the minutes. After lots of years on different boards and everything, these are some of the best.
That's amazing. That's awesome.
We appreciate you.
Tremendous, tremendous.
Alright, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes as they are?
I'm moved to approve the minutes.
I second that. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the same. Alright, April Minutes are approved. And we have Emily here today for our staff introduction.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me. My name is Emily O'Sherdon-Tabor. I'm the Family Services Librarian, which means my main duties are early literacy engagement and programming for children five and under and their families. Tonight, I have a presentation for you about the importance of diversity in primary, or better well-known, picture book collection. Why are picture books important? The very simple and straightforward answer to that is, of course, early literacy. Before we get too far into it, let's define our terms. Early literacy, as defined by the American Library Association, is the natural development of skills through the enjoyment of books, the importance of positive interactions between babies and parents, and the critical role of literacy-rich experiences. Some statistics: 50 is the percentage of more words children's books teach than primetime TV. So if you think about sitting down for an hour with your children versus reading a few books with them, they are learning and absorbing 50% more when you read to them than when they're watching TV. Six minutes is the amount of time needed to help increase the readers, the chances of a reader passing their benchmark. We're all busy. I think of a busy day at work, activities after dinner, getting dinner made and on the table and then finishing dinner. I will admit that after all of that, I think to myself, "Well, we don't have to do any books tonight. Tonight can be the one night that we skip books." And I remind myself that even one short book, or two short books, or three long books, any amount of time that you can spend reading with a child will help their chances and help build that foundation for successful lifelong learning, which all starts with early literacy. Also, the largest population, sorry, the largest portion of school dropouts are kids who are behind when they start kindergarten. Additionally, we know that a child's brain is 80% developed by age three. Those first years are crucial to setting up the lifelong learning for children. There are lots and lots of resources detailing how parents are a child's first teacher and how they can nurture their love for books and literacy. But what about diversity in early literacy? Again, let's define our term. What is diversity? Defined by dictionary.com, it is a noun, which is the state of being diverse, variety, the practice of, or quality of, including or involving people from a range of different social and ethnic backgrounds, and of different genders, sexual orientations, that etcetera could take us all night. Race, dress, family structure, economic background, all kinds of things. And that leads us back to the question about why is diversity important? I broke this idea down into three main statements. The first is windows. Books and stories in general have always been a way to access and experience the world, sometimes other worlds even, with a safety net of sorts. That is what the term "windows" describes. Books teach us about people we have not met or come into contact with. We can learn all sorts of things, not just about a culture's food or language, but about different people, how different people experience the world, how they think, how they feel, how they act. For some children, this may be the first time that they see a diverse person or a person that is not like them. The safety net of experiencing and engaging with different people, diverse people in books allows children, and truly people of all ages, to form non-judgmental or non-stereotypical opinions of people different than themselves. They can begin to understand that regardless of skin color, religion, dress, family structure, or the myriad of other diverse aspects that we all possess, people at the core, we are all, at the core, the same. We have many, many more similarities than differences. It is also vitally important that children see themselves represented in the world around them, in their community, in their schools, and of course, in the books that they engage with. That is what the term "mirrors" describes here. Children should be able to see themselves represented positively in books. This provides a sense of belonging, of being valued, and a sense of the wider world. In majority-white areas like ours, it may be that children of color have never had a caregiver, a teacher, a doctor, or a librarian that looks like themselves or that is of color. Books show that these people that may look like them are in these roles and that these children can be in these professions as well. Another aspect of diversity is the context of the books. The context needs to be as complex and as rich as our everyday, dare I even say mundane, experiences. Not all books purchased about indigenous nations or African-Americans have to center on atrocities or struggles, or on the enslaved. Of course, those are important truths to read and study about. However, it is not the full scope of what it means to be indigenous or black in America or in the world today. Our last definition, I call empathy. Some people call a sliding glass door because it rounds out the analogy. I use empathy here because I think it encompasses a broader view that more people can subscribe to. A sliding glass door allows a child to enter the story, to put themselves in the experiences of the characters. A sliding glass door, oh, sorry, in the experiences of the characters, akin to the classic walk a mile in their shoes. The goal for the child here is to build empathy, which opens up a multitude of pathways, which could include advocacy and cultural competency. The Children's Cooperative Book Center at the University of Wisconsin at Madison reviewed almost 3,500 books in 2021. They did admit that they weren't sent as many as they normally are, but they got pretty close to the amount that was published in the year of 2021. And these statistics show the breakdown of each race represented in those books. So it's very obvious that we need more diversity in our books, which have main characters that are black or African, indigenous, Asian, island Pacificer, island Pacific, sorry, Pacific Islander, or Arab. How we at the library endeavor to create an inclusive collection? Well, of course, collection development is our first. In the different columns for journals, websites, and stores, you can see some of the resources we use to pick our books. But where do we find diverse titles? These are just some of the resources that myself, my colleagues, and of course, my coworkers at the library suggested and told me to include in this presentation. I want to make a specific mention of personal reading. I think it's important as a white, upper-middle-class cis woman that I'm making sure what I consume personally has a wide range of diversity. I have to make a point to choose authors that are of color, that are LGBTQIA+, that have, live in different geographic locations, so that I understand what is happening in the world and can have more relation to it. And that is equally important for my children, the books I read and share with my children, and the books that I share as a family services librarian, or even really in youth services in general. A... Another tool that we use is the diversity audit. You may be asking yourself, "What the heck is that?" Or maybe you aren't asking yourself that, because I know I'm not the first nor the only librarian that has spoke to you of the diversity audit that we do. I really did like this slide and this breakdown of all of the things that we do within a diversity audit. We touch every book. We compare what's on the outside to what's on the inside. We compare our collection to lists that we get from those other resources that I previously mentioned. We look at our community and how does our collection reflect our community and vice versa. We keep spreadsheets. Anything that comes, any youth title that comes into the library, we are putting in our audit to make sure that we are keeping up on our goal of buying more diverse titles. We also talk to our fellow coworkers at the North Liberty Library in Johnson County, in the state of Iowa, nationally, and if we're lucky enough internationally, to talk about all of the different diverse titles that they are coming into contact with. And then lastly, we weed. If something doesn't look good, we know that people are not going to take it off the shelf. So when we take those things off the shelf, we see what type of information is in it and if it needs to be reordered or if we are okay with withdrawing that from our collection. Speaking of the diversity audit, here are some hard numbers from that. As you can see on, as you can see the primary diversity audit and versus our overall collection. The light color is what we've recently added compared to the dark color, which is the totals from the collection overall. And as you can see, we needed, in certain categories, we need to purchase more items to kind of get up to what we would consider a good level for our diversity. I am a visual learner. I like bar graphs and pie charts. Some of you may be more numbers people, and that's why I included this slide as well. In the primary column there, you can see that, for instance, we have 87 picture books that represent LGBTQIA+, and, which is 1.3% of our overall collection. And we added in the month of April, I'm sorry, I meant to say it was this snapshot of just April. We added eight of those, which was 10% of the overall amount that we purchased in April. So this gives us a really good opportunity to look at the numbers, how they are comparing every month, and then again, plug those numbers into like a yearly or even over three to five years idea of how our collection is trending. Some examples of some recent diverse picture books. Similar to her first picture book, Bedtime for Sweet Creatures, Nikki Grimes' second picture book, Off to Sea, follows the same child as they try to avoid a bath. In What Happened to You?, all of Joe's friends want to know, "What happened to you?" But as the playdate continues, all of the friends realize that it doesn't actually matter what happened to Joe, and his, um, his difference becomes the norm. We All Play is a really super fun, very simple book that is English and Cree. And it is a really fun read aloud because it lends itself to movement. It introduces unique animals, and then it also has the definitions and the phonetic spelling of the Cree words. So that is always fun for myself and the kids to kind of say together. Some more diverse titles. Soul Food Sunday is a wonderfully illustrated book about a grandchild who is finally old enough to help make Sunday dinner. And this is an excellent representation of how a book can go below the surface with cultural examples. So this gives, it goes beyond the food of the day. It goes beyond the just getting together for Sunday dinner. That is a very traditional black cultural event. And goes into how this little child feels when he's around all of his family, how the family interacts together, and the kind of traditions that are passed along from his grandmother. I loved in this book that in the middle, Grandma took a nap. She was like, "Alright, I'm gonna go have a, go to sleep. Like, you finished shredding that cheese." And I was just, it like was really so indicative of my own family get-togethers and holidays. It was, it was really very delightful. C is for Country is by the musical artist Little Nas X, and it is just an alphabet that centers on his life. It's very fun. And obviously, kids always love alphabet books. And then lastly, Dream Street is another really great illustrated book about a child's perspective of their neighborhood and their street throughout the day. So what do these look like? We have black representation, or voice, disability or diversibility, indigenous representation, LGBTQIA+, and then location representation. I have an asterisk next to the "voice" because I wanted to make sure to mention that hashtag #ownvoices was a very important thing for a lot of years. And they have now, there has been a shift away from calling things "ownvoice" to being more specific and narrowing down what the author represents. So the author is of the community in which they are writing about. So the term that authors and activists, and I would hope librarians are using now, is a black author, or an indigenous author, or a Korean author, or an LGBTQIA+ author, rather than hashtag #ownvoices. We still use it, if you ever have seen our diversity audit, because it indicates to us that that is a book, who the author is from the same community that they are talking about. It is different than a white person writing about a gay rapper's experience growing up. What else do we look for in our audit? We look for gender, race, mental health, economic welfare, physical health, and all of those things that go under each of those different headings. So in closing, I wanted to briefly mention the importance of preparing our children to be global citizens. Just because I grew up in a place where everyone looked like me, that is not always going to be the case. And I think Jaclyn Woodson really summarizes that and the importance of that really good and powerfully in this quote. And so I will leave you all with this. Diversity is about all of us and about us having to figure out how to walk through this world together. What questions do you all have?
No questions, but that was a good presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Informative.
I love that Little Nas X has a book.
This is really cute.
So are you basically every month then ordering new books? And like, when you're ordering them, kind of going through this checklist to see whether or not, you know, you...
Are hitting all those markers.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
And as you know, Andrew does the bulk of our ordering. But myself, and I know Erin as well, for the older kids books and Kayla too, we have a special cart in our software that we will add titles to that we want. So that's on top of the things that he is going through and ordering as well. And there is a certain amount of that done at the beginning, but I'll, at least from my perspective, it's mainly done when we get the books in. So I like to have my hands on every single book that comes in, every single picture book that comes in. I ask him to put it on my desk, and I will carve out time on a day of the week and read through all of them. And then I have my own in our operating system. We have, we call them, oh, shoot, record sets, sorry. So if I, I know that sometimes families are coming in and looking for picture books because they're going to have a new addition to the house, whether that's a baby, whether it's a puppy, whether it's, you know, a relative moving in. So I will, any book that comes in that deals with anything like that, I will put into a cart. I know that mental health, we are in a mental health crisis in this country, and especially for children. And so any book that comes in that deals with mental health, I think in a positive and impactful way, I will put in a cart. So the next time that family comes in that wants it, I'll be able to go to that cart, print them out titles, and they can search for them if they want, or they can have, they can, obviously, someone can help them look for them too. But sometimes there's subjects that people rather not, you know, have a lot of hands in. But I would consider that most of the work for me is done on the backend, like when those books come in. So I, there's nothing I love more than going to, like, the Brown Bookshelf is like one of my favorite places to go and see what's new for the month. And I will add those to the cart or make sure that Andrew knows that we want to get those. Or if I'm doing a Storytime, I'm trying to think. Oh, I don't remember what it was off the top of my head. But there was a Storytime where I pulled a bunch of books for a certain theme, and I looked them, and I was like, there was like zero, zero diversity in it. And I was like, well, I'm gonna have to find some more books for this specific theme because like I'm no longer going to either not be aware or not think it's that big of a deal. So then I will go and find books that are good Storytime books that also have diverse characters that also match, I'll say, camping theme. And then have Andrew order those as well to kind of fill in those holes.
Nice.
I just have a question, the, looking at the chart. So for welfare on the...
Yes.
Like, what all does that encompass, I guess?
Sure. Um, families experiencing homelessness. If they happen to live in a, um, a housing, or that they have a family structure or a home that has multiple sets of families in it. So thinking about if you're sharing your space with multiple families, not just multiple peoples, but multiple families trying to pay that heating bill or trying to share a car, that kind of thing. Families that may experience food insecurities or families that may need to use additional resources in the community, such as the Crisis Center or the Food Bank. Families that may need to be on free and reduced lunch, those kind of things. So we want to take into consideration, or just be aware of those elements in a book.
Okay.
And count them as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Ironically, I just had an email today from someone. I proposed, I did a proposal for Arizona this year on the subject that there are small libraries across the country that are saying, "We don't need diverse books. We don't have any diversity in our community."
Yeah.
And so I said, "Oh, let's do a proposal on that." So I got an email from someone who's reading those, and he was like, "I love this idea, and I'm gonna give it a huge thumbs up, but I also want to ask you if you have a specific statement that you use with your staff to help them understand the importance of it." Because he said, "Most of his staff buy it, but some of his staff don't get it," even though like, I think he said 13 or so percent or more is Hispanic in his community.
Oh, wow.
And they still don't understand the need for diversity in their, in some of their areas of their library. So I was like, "Oh, let me do some thinking on that." So I was taking some notes today.
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is that if you live in a town that's 13%, that's, that's, let's say, 80% white and 20% a mixture of other, like just a top-of-the-iceberg diverse aspect, right? So just skin color.
Yeah.
And if, but the world is not that, right? So those kids that you see in the library that are gonna go to college, that are gonna go to a conference, and, you know, out of state or out of the country, they're gonna have a shock. And I want my children to be prepared to be able to talk and to respect anyone that they come into contact with. And so like, just because your community doesn't have it, doesn't mean that they're not gonna...
Well, and I just said, "We all have our hidden patrons. We don't know..."
Yeah, exactly.
"...about our patrons' diversity when they come through the door. We don't see everything that's diverse about a person."
Exactly, yes. That's exactly right.
I told them I'd get him some more fuel, but...
Yep. You should include like librarians that even buy diverse titles, and that they're just saying they're not getting checked out. What do you say to someone who says that?
Showcase them.
Yeah, right, exactly. Displays, yeah. 100%.
Displays, Storytimes?
Yep, yeah, book clubs.
Awesome. Alright, man.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks so much for having me. Yeah.
Alright, let me find that. Okay, now we'll be moving on to reports, so, start the budget.
Right. So the budget is, again, payroll's not completely reflected. It's not all in there yet, but we know we're pretty close. Personnel services, thanks, Em. Our, we're coming, repair, utilities, and maintenance. That's where we always see that big thing because of some of our contracts. But the big E commodities is where we wanted to see it, about 80. It's at 85%. The average is about 92, so we're under right now in that area. Overall, we're sitting pretty well across the board for everything. And we just finished our, with Tracy just finished our amendments. I have not completely delved into that yet, but I will have more on that in June. But in, overall, we're just still in very good shape for the budget. Does anyone have questions about budget?
Okay. Moving on to, did the friends meet or...
Friends did not meet. They'll meet this month because they have their book sale in June. So that's the big news, is their book sale's coming up.
Excellent. Will you send an email if there's anything that we can do to...
Absolutely.
...support that as far as advertising or whatever, maybe?
Sure, absolutely.
Fantastic. And then Director's Report and Strategic Plan Overview.
So I'll skip over the, I put on here Board Self-Assessment, and we can talk about that at a later part of this. I just added some things in there, just some ideas behind why you might want to consider doing a self-assessment. And we haven't done it in a few years, but I did one for a board I was on. I would have to rewrite it, or we'd have to work, have a committee work on it from the group. But it, I included an example of one from, and that's a national-level organization. It's a governing board, so it's a very different structure, but it gives you an idea of what we could do, I think, and things that could, could help us, or it could help with, with the board. If they did, if that was, happened, say, in May or June at the end of the year. Probably, maybe not this year, but maybe it's something for the future. So I'll just move on to library operations. Our hotspots are out in circulation. They were all five out within a week of being advertised. We wish we had more. We just wrote another grant to try to get 20 more. But the hope is to pair them with a laptop, so it would be a laptop and a hotspot that would go out together. So we wrote a pretty significant, Kelly wrote a pretty significant grant for that. So we're really excited to see if she gets that grant and if we can launch more of those and continue to kind of grow that area. We did, and I just included in the packet the policy update. I don't think we need to worry about approving it unless you guys want to. It's just adding the hotspot terminology in there. We didn't make a whole new policy. There are some libraries that do that. We didn't make a whole new policy, there are some libraries that do that. And we don't, we're not making them sign anything to take them out. They just, we have in there that says kind of guidelines, please follow these guidelines when you have this out and please bring them back on time. They shut down if they're not returned, we can actually shut them down. So there's not, they're useless. The hotspots are really not the expensive part about, the hotspots are, well, the hotspots that we have currently were a little more pricey, but the ones that we're looking at getting are like ten to fifteen dollars each. So even less, the ones we got are about thirty. But they're, it's the monthly billing on them, which is about forty bucks a piece, is where the pricing comes in, or where our price boosts up. And then the only other thing that I really had this month was to talk to you guys about the strategic plan, which we are very, very excited about. I know, and Scott, I don't know if this will look familiar to you from what we did, but this is what it was born from, this is what was submitted to the state this last month. And I sent it to Becky Heil, who did our strategic planning with us, our consultant. And she said it was one of the best strategic plans she's ever seen. So I was very, very excited when she brought that back because I wasn't sure. I wanted to make sure that I, we included some things about how we put the strategic plan together. Our mission is there, although I think, given what we've been doing these last couple of years, I'd like to dive into changing the mission. So that's going to be my next thing, is to try to get some folks to work on what our mission should look like. We already, we know we want to include something about inclusion or belonging in the mission. That's the only thing really, the place to be is there. So how do we make that a little more inclusive or a little more welcoming, which is what we really want. And then the defining principles, which, what we did was, we chose the values, the library staff chose the values that they wanted to work with, and we picked three. And then the other three things, the defining principles were sort of other pieces to the, what the values could be, but they're things we already feel are just overarching in everything we do. So we wanted to call, we decided to call them defining principles because we didn't want them to be like guidelines. We didn't want them to be core principles, we wanted them to be defining. This defines everything that we do and they're in our, in our work. So I don't, I don't know how much chance you guys got to read through them, but we're pretty excited about the selections we made. And then the values are civic commons, which is just, we're providing the safe and welcoming space for people to, to meet each other. And, you know, libraries are one of the few places where anyone can go and use our services for completely free, for the most part, not much besides cost, besides time. There's not a lot of costs for people coming to the library and that's a goal for us to keep it that way. And then just investing in our civic assets in the community, how do we make that a priority? Literacy, obviously, and literacy for us is not overarching, is, is the whole idea of the first amendment and free access and to literacy. And then the last one is social responsibility. So as a fundamental, just providing efforts to inform and educate our population, which is what Emily just kind of, you know, talked about there, making sure that people know, can judge true information, you know, find information that's solid resources. And then I just defined everything. So then you just have the list, and I, I'm not going to read through all of them, obviously, but we are pretty excited about the, the goals and putting them together into their groups. This is a working document, so it could change based on, and the staff, this is just the first version. So this is the draft that I did to submit to the state. I think it's pretty solid, so I don't think it'll change a lot. But as we go through and structure our, what the staff is doing with their time and their energy, they may find things they want to tweak, or they may say, there's no way that's going to happen this year and, or in the timeframe that we have allotted. I mean, the quarters and the fiscal years are just basically shots, like here's when we're going to try to have this done. So that's kind of our standing goals for different things. And it's long, I mean, there's a lot of stuff here, so we're pretty excited about it. Did anyone have questions about what we did or what we came up with for the goals? And we will, my goal, my biggest goal is, as an administrator, is I ask the staff that I want this document to be this living thing where they're constantly thinking about it and ready to report on it. In the past, when we did like the plan of results, I would say, you know, let's, we need updates and they would go in and put little notes in. But we want this to be something that is constantly on their minds. We just transitioned to office three sixty-five at the library and at the city, which will be really helpful in this because we can share this on SharePoint and be working with it and, and doing things with it there. So I think it'll be on our minds all the time and there's different, there's, the other piece is the responsibility. On every one of them, staff would list three, four, five people and I was like, okay. So what we want to do is list either a department, what we call our, I mean, they're not really even departments because it's typically one or two people, but, or, you know, area of expertise or a, a single job title as those. So in some cases, we've added more than one, but we know that every single one of these is, we're all responsible for in some way, making it happen. It's just that those folks are kind of making sure that it gets moved along and it's progressing and moving forward, so.
Two questions. First, sixteen different goals, are you worried that there's, there's too many to, to really emphasize?
I don't think so because we have the staff, the way the staff's structured to do this, and some of them are really small and doable and almost there. And some of them are more big and, and some of them are more just like, this is just a chink, we're going to take this one, this will be easy to check off. So I don't think so. I was a little worried about that myself. That's why we only picked three core values and not, because there's some libraries that have way more core, like six core values or whatever, and they try to get all this, these stuff. And plus every, some of them, the actions, they may only have one or two action items under the goal. So I don't think so. But again, it's a living document, so if we decide we've bitten off more than we can chew, we can always dial it back and, and look at it and say, maybe not this year, or maybe not during this.
It, and I like the idea that you have identified who's responsible for each of those actions or monitoring each of those actions. Is there, but you say everybody is involved. So is, is there a way that those people who are monitoring, are they, is there a way they're reporting it out so that everybody is seeing where progress is being made on, on each of these different actions?
Yes, we're actually, and it was actually, I think it was even Emily's suggestion to, because when I said I want to keep this going, I want to make sure we don't lose momentum. We're going, this is going to be a standing agenda item on our, our staff meetings every month so that we're constantly revisiting it and going through these and reporting on them.
I'm curious about just a few of the, like little details that you're just not familiar with. Like I have no idea what a farm bot is.
So a farm bot is, and I guess it's not, we have these background things that we have, but it's basically a gardening thing that lets people see how community gardening works and, and it's, it's like a robot, robotic garden thing.
Okay.
I don't know as much, that much about it either. It's defined in our, on our side of things, a little more detailed. And then each one, like for each one of these, the staff has more notes.
Okay, yeah, I'd be interested to know what the Culture City certification is as well.
Culture City is really extensive, but it's really cool. They actually help us do a full audit of our building to make sure that we are sensory friendly to people who have sensory issues and challenges. And it's, then we're certified as a sensory friendly place.
Okay.
It's something that Erin's been wanting to look into and do for quite a while. She really wants the full, it's training for staff. So we are hoping to have it funded and get that staff training. That's why we put it out so far, because it is pretty pricey. And it's, it's not a small, you know, commitment to do it. But we really, it's something that she's wanted to do for some time. So we decided if it was on here, we could make sure it's in our eyes all the time.
All right, thank you. Any other questions about the strategic plan? Right, so as it changes, are you going to continue updating us on?
We figure we'll update, I mean, I'll update you at least quarterly, if not more often, depending on what's happening, for sure.
Great.
And that is all that I have this month to talk about. I think, I mean, unless you guys have questions about the board reports from different report staff, I can just go through and give a little bit of highlights on a few things. Jen is on a, a group meeting every month for this food literacy zone libraries. And she's really excited we were invited to join that. So it's basically a conversation about libraries helping with food insecurity across the country. And there's some really cool stuff. The farm bot has a little bit to do with that too. It's about keep teaching people, you know, about food and food literacy, but also, I have a friend who runs a library in Indiana. She has plants, planters, hanging things that grow that people can come pick off of, like herbs. And she teaches the kids about like arugula and things that they might not otherwise, there is a very blue collar area. It's things and foods that they may otherwise not be introduced to. They have meal prep and they cook with their kiddos and do all, and like she had a picture of this kid who cooked dinner for his family, he was like eight, and he was ecstatic. It was the fun, so much fun. So that's really cool that she's involved in those. The, what's your CQ, the House and Library was last week. She had, I think, I want to say she had twelve people there. I was supposed to be one of them. I got back from my trip to Arizona the day before and I was out, I couldn't do anymore. We drove to Arizona to pick up my daughter and move her home this month, so.
I was there and it was.
I heard it was fabulous and that she, she talked about what they would have done differently or more time.
We needed more time.
Yeah, that's what she said. She said the questions are great and that he didn't even get to all of his stuff. So that's so cool and I hope she can do another one of those. We also have some other ideas for that. Actually, Emily brought up one good, the mental health crisis. I just sent out an email to the staff, just as an aside, that NAMI will do, come in and do your, their own voices or their own stories with people suffering from mental health problems or having, who have mental health issues, will come in and talk about them. And they can do different links of those. And, and then they also have one for teens and kids on recognizing when you need help. So they, the staff picked up on both of those really quick. And I think they'll, we'll see those programs coming up in the next year or so. The summer, obviously, is so already laid out that it may not be until fall, but we're excited to see something happen with those. I know Erin was really picking up on the teen one. What else do you guys want to, is there anything else that you have questions about? Obviously, the flamingo flocking is going strongly this month, and I think she had quite a bit of help for that. And had it filled out. She also, I, I have, haven't brought this up, but I guess I should, I could here, is that I have not had time to get out the letter, my annual contribution letter that we do for the endowment. And I'm now, at this point, since it's May, my goal is usually to have it done in March and it just was, with the strategic planning and other things, just did not take place. I have the letter written for the, drafted, but at this point, I'm almost thinking about waiting now until September-ish to send it out and, and getting on a new rotation for that, rather than doing it right after the holidays. A lot of people send the checks at the end of the year, even if I send it in January. So I think that it might be more in their mind and it'll give me a little more time to flush it out and get a few more people on that list, mailing list, so.
Just a comment about the flamingos. We, our house got flocked. The, the sign that, that they put up with them, the sign's good. I just would, in the future, make the sign a little more graphic with library and library foundation
Oh, I'll have to tell them.
on the sign, because it's, there's a lot of attention that happens in the neighborhood when, when those, those appear. And then one other comment, under the marketing report, said about, there's an iPhone for marketing purposes now. That is an excellent idea, not having things go through personal cell phones that you're, you're showing that you're protecting your people rather than exposing them to potentials. It's probably, there's nothing negative probably ever going to happen, but at the same time, it just sends a message to your people that they're important and you're protecting them from.
As they do more and more out in the community, they're finding, Melanie brought that to my attention, that they're just finding more and more that people were like, well, what's your phone number so we can put you on the list? You know, and what used to be like for Blues and Barbecue, but that's almost all city staff, so it wasn't that big of a deal. And it was just used the day of mostly for texting to let people know if something was going on. But as they are doing more and more and being more and more involved in different events, that's become something, and just having it to take pictures, because we always want good pictures. And Melanie tries, it really pushes that. So having that phone there, so they're not using their personal device that they pay for, that it's not, that it's something that the library owns. Now we just need to, I told them we need to make sure we know who has it, there has to be a system. It can't just be like flying around. But yeah, so she found a good price and we were able to add that in with the marketing budget, actually, this year.
No, I think that's a good thing, good choice.
Thank you.
All right, are we moving on to the bylaws now? I think that was next.
I need to scroll, there's a lot of stuff.
Page twenty-three.
Yes.
Way down there.
And typically, the bylaws are really just to bring them to your attention more than anything, unless you noticed anything that needs attention in them or needs us to, anything we do that would be radically changing anything, I'd have to bring, probably to grant our city attorney. So did anyone see anything or have any questions or things that you thought should be given attention?
Nope, I thought they looked fine. Scott or Mike, did you have any concerns about the bylaws?
No.
Are these one we need to vote on then?
I would say just, yeah, to approve the.
Just approve them for another year. All right, well, if no one has issues, the same will want to make a motion to approve the bylaws for another year.
I'll make a motion to approve the bylaws for another year.
Thank you, anyone?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
It was the same. Right, the library board of trustees bylaws are approved for another year. And then I believe we can move on to our last agenda item, which is discussing a self-assessment.
So again, this is just, was since I, we just did this and it was in my, kind of in my mind, I thought that might be something that you guys might be interested in seeing. I like, what I liked about it is it provided me a chance to see how invested am I in the board work I'm doing on the board. And obviously, it's a, like I said, it's a different kind of board altogether. But I think, you know, over the years, you guys, I think the board has really, this board has developed more. I mean, I think if you guys have been on here long term, probably have seen that. I feel like everybody's more invested, that you feel like you may hopefully understand your role, but this helps to determine, is that the case? Do you feel like there's more? And then I, I've always, I mean, I've had people in the past say, oh, I think it'd be cool to have like committees for things, art committees or things, and I don't know, I don't know if you guys want that. So this would just help kind of look at that stuff if we took this and, I mean, maybe, I don't know if one or two of you would want to maybe work on it and see if you could come up with a shorter, sort of less crazy one version of it. And I actually was going to try to do a little of that before I sent it to you, but I did not, they did not share it with me till the very last minute when I would needed to get it out. The person was sick that I was asking to share it, so she didn't get my message. So I had to send it to someone else.
So are you looking to pare it down to like one page or something?
I would think so, or maybe like one and then a couple of open-ended questions or, you know.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
And nothing has to be decided tonight, certainly. Um, it was just something I thought I would share with you, in case it was of interest.
Should we table this one to look it over more and maybe we can bring it back as old business at our next meeting?
And then it could, what I was, it could be like introduced at orientation, like here's this tool and then it could be in your minds as for the year, and then in the, you know, at the end, toward the end of the year, like April or May, then it could be something that people do and tabulate and kind of talk about at a meeting.
And we already have this in the, in our, in the inbox.
Dropbox, Dropbox, I mean.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we have it, can all look over it.
And I could certainly email it separately, too, out as a separate document.
Yeah, so maybe we can revisit this at the June meeting and then we'll have July off anyways, so if we decide to do it, that gives us some time to.
And then we could, yeah, and then if we just, if you guys decided in June you wanted to do something, um, maybe a couple of you could tackle it. I'd be happy to help in whatever way and then introduce it like at orientation.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Alright, well then, we'll put that as old business on the June agenda.
Awesome.
Does anyone else have any, anything to bring up for this month's meeting?
I'm not sure how this last page got, this page thirty-two or whatever got in there even. I, oh, I think it was because I included it for the, um, city council. It was just part of their packet. I was like, why is that there? Now I remember, okay, that makes me feel better.
Just a fun little addition.
They're starting to get pictures again and the traffic, foot traffic is definitely picking up, which is lovely to see. We had a preschool group come in today with a bunch of, they walked to, it's actually a neighbor of mine and she messaged me and asked me if she could bring them and they walked to Bluebird and had pancakes with their parents, a bunch of parents, and then they walked over to the library and Danny, the head of the preschool, read a book of pancakes to them and I think they had a visit with some of the library staff and, so, just very impromptu, but a lot of fun to have them in the library. And I, I don't know if anyone took pictures, which will really bum me, but hopefully Danny has someone to can share them, because she's really good about pictures.
I'm guessing, um, I'm assuming summer reading starts before our next meeting on June twentieth. Do you, what's the official kickoff date for that?
That's a really good question. Um, the week, like, like June eighth, it's around the time of the Friends Book Sale that week, I think. So this, I think school's done the seventh.
The, it's done the first, right? Last day is the first.
Oh, is it?
Okay.
Typically, the, the very next week starts, usually. But that's a very good question. I don't know the answer to. Um, I bet it's in the newsletter.
I'm sure it is. Alright, well, something for us to think about as far as helping spread the word about the summer reading that will be coming up here in the next few weeks as kids get out of school.
Yeah, and I can send the newsletter, you guys are all hopefully getting the newsletter, it should be, all the information for it should be in there.
Yeah, I just can't remember.
Yeah, I can't remember either, honestly, they just talked about it at the Saturday, but I can't remember the date.
Yeah. Alright, well, that's all we have for this month, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, our next meeting is scheduled for June twentieth here at six thirty. I hope everyone has a good month, we are adjourned.
Fantastic, thank you guys.